We'll call the meeting to order and have roll call please.
Deit.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Frisbee.
Here.
Maycomber.
Here.
Wintering.
Here.
All present and accounted for. Agenda item two is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or corrections, Dr. Cox?
We have one additional change order, number seventy, which has been handed out. It's the additional commons railing.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept, to approve the minutes as presented with the exception of the agenda.
The agenda.
Is that correct?
For the agenda.
For the agenda.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda with the additional change order for the handrail of the new middle school added in. Any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Frisbee.
Yes.
Maycomber.
Yes.
Wintering.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Deit.
Yes. Motion carried five to zero. Agenda item three is to welcome the visitors and have public comment. As we begin our agenda tonight, I will explain our process for public comment. The board will hear comments from the public in conjunction with each agenda item, using a structured process. As board president, I will ask for comments when we reach that item on the agenda. You will be asked to approach the microphone, state your name, and limit your comments to two minutes. At this time, I invite any member of the audience to step up to the microphone with comments about items of interest or concern that do not appear on tonight's agenda. Please begin by stating your name and contact information. It would be appreciated if you would limit your comments to two minutes so that we can keep the meeting moving in a timely fashion and allow others an opportunity to speak, as well as allowing the board to complete the full board agenda in a timely manner. Comments from the public are limited to matters within the board's authority. Please understand that we as a board cannot discuss items not already on the agenda. Iowa sunshine law prohibits us from having a discussion without the proper notice to all of the school district community that the issue would be discussed at tonight's board meeting. Also, please remember, you are making comments in a public meeting. Should you make comments that the subject of the comments considers to be inflammatory or libelous, you as an individual may be subject to legal action brought by the subject of your comments. We thank you for your support of our school district. Are there any comments by the public this Hearing none, we'll move on to agenda item four, comments by board members and superintendent, and we'll begin with Dr. Cox.
Thank you. Well, welcome to Washington. This will be our home for summer board meetings. So, June twenty-seventh, July eleventh and twenty-fifth, August the eighth. All of the board meetings will be here at the Washington Elementary. Ample parking, air-conditioned, and with the construction going on up the high school site, this is a more convenient place for us to meet. So, we invite people to come and join us here at Washington. We will transition to a space in the new middle school at the end of the month in August. Speaking of the new middle school, we wrapped up our community tours, so that portion is done now. We had approximately five hundred people come through the building in a three month span from March through June, and we are working on putting up some video clips so that if there are any people who didn't get a chance to go through, they can at least go to our website, charlescityschools.org, click on a video clip and see the learning space, the commons, the gym, things like that. We'll have that up here shortly. That's it.
Thank you. Any comments by board members this evening?
I just got, I got one little comment. I'd like to make, make sure that the press gets the new location printed properly, because last Friday's paper said everything was going to be at the high school.
And the agenda said Washington.
Yeah, the agenda did.
I'm sure at the last meeting I said the high school, because we always met in the high school in the summer, so I'm confident the press will get that right.
Okay. And then I'd also like to make a comment. I attended last Wednesday night the last CYAC committee meeting for the year. Lorraine wasn't able to make it. She was out of town on business. There was only seven of us there, but it was kind of an interesting conversation between everybody that was there on different things that were going on. And the principal from Washington and the one from Lincoln gave a presentation and on how things were progressing and what we needed to work on, and give us some ideas on what they should present to the board for us to approve in a couple of weeks. It was a very interesting meeting.
And I'll follow up. In Lorraine's absence, I was also able to attend that meeting, and then after the CYAC official meeting was over with, those present took a tour of the new middle school. So, and that was the second time, I believe, that the CYAC committee had been through.
Right.
As a group, so.
Didn't mean to neglect you.
That's fine. But yeah, they, with them going through a second time, they commented about all the changes from March, I believe was the last time.
March thirty, yeah.
So, yeah, I was able to attend. So, thank you for letting me know you weren't able to.
Yeah, I'm glad that you could attend in my, in my absence there, Scott. Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to comment on the Cary Lane spring luncheon that they had, you know, prior to graduation, as well as their graduation. You know, most of us had attended, and, you know, as things wrap up there for them at the First Congregational Church and they move to their new home and at five hundred North Grand, you know, it's been obvious through these number of years that the Nineteenth Amendment Society ladies, as well as the ladies of the church, have had such a positive influence on those students, and I sure hope that can continue in some measure. And, and some of them had reached out to me and had said, oh, gosh, we still want to have them for Thanksgiving dinner and, and a number of things. But, you know, they, they really have a strong impact, and when you hear some of the stories firsthand, it's, it's real, a real eye-opener. So, you know, I'm glad that we can continue that program and bring them kind of into the fold as we evolve at five hundred North Grand.
Yep. Anything from this side?
I wanted to say congratulations to our graduates. We had two beautiful graduation ceremonies that we were, partook in. So, congratulations to you and good luck with your future. Since we've met, I've been in the new middle school four times. I've been on (laugh) and every time it looks very different. It's amazing how much, just literally seventy-two hours, the changes that are happening there. At one point, I was fortunate enough to participate in extreme home makeover where we built up the house in West Union, and it very much reminds me of that process. Everybody has, knows what they're doing, and a lot of people know what they're doing, and a lot of people are doing it all at one time. So, it's a very well-oiled machine up there, and it's amazing how fast things are happening. The one tour I was on was a public tour. I believe there's forty-plus people on the one tour. Comments were wonderful. People said, oh, this makes sense. I understand this. This, you know, no hallways. Well, look at all the energy savings, all the room we're, we're here, the windows, the colors. I mean, there was just positive. Lots of, just great conversation was had, and excitement. You could feel the excitement. I also toured with the teachers, the elementary school, the middle school, and high school teachers, and the elementary teachers were very, very, very excited. And the high school teachers, you get those guys over to the gym, and they just lingered there for quite a while in the doorway there. That's, it is a beautiful facility. And, and our final tours have been just buildings and grounds, and I had the opportunity to tour with Jean, the architect, which is an interesting tour on its own, too. You look at things a lot differently when you're looking at it through her eyes.
A couple of things. This Thursday, Robin and I planned to attend the, I had to look up the acronym, the Iowa School of Finance Information Services Conference in Ankeny. Sessions include stuff on collective bargaining costing system that has been developed by a gentleman, communicating about school finance to the public, which I think will be a very interesting one, some construction stuff, so just a number of different things, which I think will be a, a good session. So, we hope to bring back some information from that. Finally, everybody's aware, we had the storm on Friday night, lots of rain, three to five inches around town. I've heard reports as much as six near Nashua. And very quickly, social media was active again on Saturday with pictures of our baseball field. I looked back, actually, and June seventh of last year, same thing, same pictures. I think that maybe they, if I didn't know any better, they just took the pictures from last year and used them this year. And with that, of course, all of the experts come out again and claim to have the solution. Reading through those, I tell you, it's, it's difficult knowing that as a school board in the last several years, actually probably ten-plus years, substantial amounts of time at meetings, out of meetings, in meetings, at the board table, whatever else, have been spent doing our due diligence at finding a solution to that problem. It is painfully evident there is no simple solution, and that has been captured a number of times from professional engineers and architects to, you know, a number of organizations or individuals that have worked on this. All of the solutions that were put out there are absolutely false. They are not feasible and have been proven so with this. My opinion is that at some point, we've spent a lot of time working on this, a lot of open meetings and available opportunities for people to come in and, and learn this stuff and, and see it and ask questions, and in all those meetings, we didn't have anyone come. We had no support, no, no comments, no questions. When we were working with the city to have a solution, there was no support given. When the city planning and zoning meetings were held, there, we have, we have gone to great length to do this, and there are no simple solutions to this problem. Putting tile out there will solve nothing. Raising the field two feet will do nothing. I actually found it very interesting in this study that was done in two thousand and thirteen, that the outfield elevation was, was determined to be nine hundred and ninety-eight point four feet above mean sea level. The ten-year flood events, so once every ten years, we're expected to have a flood, which seems to happen about every one or two years, that, that will reach an elevation of one thousand and three point seven feet. We would have to raise the outfield of that field five point three feet to guard against a ten-year flood event. So, a lot of these things, like I said before and previously in meetings, I, I cannot support dumping hundreds of thousands of dollars to a site that's in the flood plain. An alternative needs to be, be solved. There is no easy solution, and if, you know, people would like to come and continue to have a constructive conversation, we would welcome it at any time. So, and finally, I'll add that with those pictures and comments, I know everyone noted, oh, the season's washed out. We won't be able to play any more home games there today or this year. This morning, speaking with Jerry, the field, had we avoided any of the downpours that we had today, the field would have been playable tonight. We would have been able to host a home game tonight. So, the, the work that had been completed in the past helped. Jerry busted his butt with, with a number of people out there to try and get that done. Unfortunately, we can't control the, the heavy downpours that came today and the heavy rain that's going to come in the next couple of days. So, I commend Jerry for his work on really trying to get that ready to go today. Unfortunately, we didn't have it. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to agenda item, I got one yet. Long as we don't repeat anything that's already been said or comment on something that's been said.
I, I had a guy come up to me last Monday, and he wanted to know if they had named the new street that they're going to put in around the new school. And I said, not that I'm aware of yet. I presented it to Dr. Cox on Wednesday. He told me, or they felt the person that come to me, he said, I'm willing to present, to spend mega dollars to help pave that road if we could name the road. And Dr. Cox and I didn't come up with any answers that night, but I, I kind of come up with an idea that I'd like to have the guy put this in writing, what he would expect for the number of dollars he wants to spend, and then, you know, we could have something to consider besides just verbal commitment. And he's talking like two, three, four hundred thousand dollars towards that project if he could name the street. And at this time, he don't want to be, he wants to remain confidential till we decide whether he could even do it or not. But there's possibility that if he could name the street after a family member, that they would come up with this kind of money towards the project. So, and I don't know whether if we don't use it on the street thing, if there was some other thing that he would spend this money on, this, with getting something named, you know, in the building or not, I don't know. But he just come up with this idea on the street.
I would say have him contact Dr. Cox, and we do have the Excellence in Education Foundation that charitable contributions can be made for tax deductions, and have administration review the requests.
Personally, I think we ought to get him to write it and review them, just because it's, you know, sizable amount of money, the way he's talking, so.
Yep. We have, we have a process and a chain of command for that to go through, so let's utilize that.
Yep.
Right? Yeah. My only comment would be this is not an agenda item.
Nope.
So, I'm not going to say anything else about it.
No, I just make the comment.
But I can certainly make an agenda item on June twenty-seventh, and then we can have a discussion about this.
That'll be fine. Okay.
Sounds good.
That'll be fine.
We can review that. It's been quite a while since we reviewed what happens when donations.
That process.
Yes, please. Thank you.
So, moving on to agenda item five, class presentation. We have some students from Mr. Romeller's eighth grade social studies class here. They've been working on a project, so let's have them come forward and tell us what they've been doing and have them do their presentation for us.
Mr. Romeller, if you could have them introduce themselves too on the microphone, that would be great.
Right. Well, I'm Ryan Romeller. I'm an eighth grade social studies teacher. I've got with me Lynn Haft, I've got Bradley Andrews, I've got Jeremiah McCubbin. Going to have, do you want them to introduce themselves too? I guess I just took care of that here. They graciously gave up a little bit of their summer vacation to come back in and talk a little bit about our project that, that we've been doing, and I'm going to turn it over to them here in just a minute, and they can talk through what their individual projects were. This is actually an eighth grade team project that, that we put together, and it had, had a couple of different purposes, so the, the team came up with it. We wanted to, we wanted, we had an enrichment period this, this year during fifth hour, and toward the end of the year, we had the opportunity to use a, a mock learning space that was, that was created up in the middle school wrestling room. And so, we wanted to figure out a way that we could put together a, a project opportunity for these guys to use that, and as teachers, you know, kind of see how this would work with, you know, eighty-plus students. And so, these guys came up with some really, really, really neat things. The idea behind it, I guess, was we as eighth grade teachers kind of felt bad for the students, for these eighth graders, because they've constantly been part of the conversation when it comes to the new middle school, but none of them will have the opportunity to be a student in the new middle school. So, so the idea behind it was to call it the Ambassador Project, and through this, students had the opportunity to kind of creatively come up with a way that they could introduce the new building and some of the features of the new building to fourth through seventh graders, get in there, talk to them a little bit about that, implies or impart some of their knowledge, some of their expertise as far as, you know, what's the behavior that's expected out of a middle school student. These guys have gone through three years of that now. You know, how does, you know, what would his learning look like? And then, you know, looking at the new building, what, you know, what would they envision in some of those places, you know, kind of, kind of looking at it for, through an eighth grader's lens there. So, they did, they did some really neat things. Our process was to first start learning a little bit more about the building. So, BLDD was, was very helpful in getting us some architectural, the, the plans, a lot of literature, brochures. Dr. Cox gave up some time to come in and, and talk to the students and answered an awful lot of questions that they had. And they were all very, very legitimate questions and, and real thoughtful. So, the students compiled a lot of different resources in, in preparation for this. As far as the project itself goes, they could choose anything they wanted. They, they could, they could do this any direction, any, any avenue that they wanted to, you know, to, to create this and to introduce it to younger students. So, they came up with a lot of different and unique and, and interesting things. We had games that were developed. We had some eighth grade, eighth grade group of girls that went down to some fourth and fifth grade classrooms and kind of got some questions from them ahead of time when they were creating a scavenger hunt that could be used on like a grand opening next year. They wanted to know, like, what, you know, what are you looking for? What are you curious about for, for the next year? We had a music video, which I have not had the pleasure of watching yet, but I hear it was interesting. I had two groups do wooden models. They had gone down to Mr. White's shop and used recycled wood to come up with a, a really unique, it, it kind of looks like what you'd put a mouse in and let them kind of run around through there, but it was, it's really fascinating, actually, to, to take a look at. We had three young ladies that did a very elaborately-designed scale model where they worked with Mrs. Smith, the math, one of our math teacher, and to scale, came up with kind of a, a copy of what the commons area would look like in, in the classroom learning space. And what's kind of neat about that one is, is the girls that were designing that, that's kind of their, their interest in the future as a, as a career as well. So, those are really interesting. The wooden models, by the way, those, they were in the, in the front foyer of the middle school right now. But these guys did have the opportunity then to go down and to present through fourth through seventh grade, and I think we had over twenty different groups that went and made that, that journey. These guys all went down to my wife's classroom down in the fifth grade, and her review, just from the students, was, was outstanding. They just did a phenomenal job, and the, and the kids were really excited to, to see what they came up with. So, I've got Jeremiah, I've got Bradley. They're going to talk to you a little bit about what they did, and they're going to give you kind of an abbreviated version of, of what their, what their lesson plan was. So, introduce you guys a little bit, and I'll talk through your project.
All right. I'm Jeremiah, and it's Bradley. For our project, we had some puzzles, and we took, what we did was we took the architectural drawing or whatever, and then we had this puzzle cutter thing, and we cut them up, and then we put them into these little envelopes to give the kids for a presentation, that they could do them and get better understanding of where everything is. And then, we also had a PowerPoint, and on the PowerPoint, we basically went through all the places and said that they're used for. And then, we also had a video, but we didn't show it to them because they, it was a tour of the middle school, and we're going to show it to them because I had a lot of information and stuff about it, but we didn't get to show it to them because they already went through the middle school before we got the chance to present, do our presentation.
I got some of the puzzles for you guys to look at, just to kind of see what they And our idea behind the puzzles was just to get them to visualize, like, what the school would look like and, like, where everything would be and stuff.
Thank goodness for corners.
Oh, my gosh. Here we go.
As many times as I've seen the drawings, I don't know how easy this will be.
You might need a little here.
All right, Jim.
Yeah, all right, yeah.
I think we're shorted a couple of corners.
Yeah, I think so, too.
You give each student, you gave each student individually a puzzle through?
The kids really liked the puzzles. They thought they were cool.
I think they did, because it is a challenge, and I know they like challenges.
And then for our education, we did music commons, we decided with all the commons. And then we did our gather.
Nope.
Nope.
And we went through, like, all the classroom spaces to tell them what they'll be learning about in those spots, just to get them familiar with what it'll be like. And the video that we're going to show, we took it of the tour that we took, but they already went on it, so we decided not to show it to them again.
We should be using that video.
You still have that video, then?
Oh, yeah. I think so.
It's on one of the laptops at the middle school.
Okay.
Excellent. Can I ask your opinion of the new building? What do you think?
Oh, I think it's pretty cool. Like, they'll be able to learn about a lot more stuff than we could at our current middle school.
I like the gather space, though. I can open up, and so, so everybody, all the persons who come to have a meeting, they can present there.
You can see that as a big benefit over what you have now. The difference is from, is to compare what you have now. That is the one advantage that you have, is you can compare, since you have been on the design process. You really have had to look at your current space to help us design the new space.
What kinds of questions did they ask? Was there anything that stood out? What kinds of things were they nervous about or didn't maybe understand, or did they have any questions?
No, they, they had said that they liked, like, they said that they liked the tour, and what they liked about was the, the gym, and they said they liked the, like, the media rooms, where you can go and record stuff.
Yeah.
They really liked that.
Well, you know, even though you don't have the opportunity to go to school in the middle school, we know your class has been very involved in the design, you know, throughout this whole process with us. So, we appreciate that, and hopefully, maybe one day, we'll be able to move forward with phase two, and, and that being the high school, and, and start that conversation. My hope is that before you graduate high school, you get to be in, in something that's remodeled at least, or, or new. You know, we have to still figure that out, but.
A little of both.
Yeah, maybe a little bit of both. We'll, we'll figure it out. But I know the, the teachers and the principal at the high school are conscious of, of trying to provide some of what is in the spaces at the middle school, in the high school, or some of those learning opportunities. So, I don't think you'll be totally disappointed. So, but thank you.
And of course, they'll get to compete.
Yeah.
In the new gymnasium.
Yes, absolutely. It's going to be awesome.
I like the concept behind this project as a whole.
Brilliant.
I mean, as simple as the terminology, right? You guys see new terms of this space is called this, or that space is called that. These students will come into the building next year, and it won't be, they may not remember it, but it won't be the first time they've heard it. So, the opportunity for you guys to help them through that process, you know, is, is a good one, too. Another, you know, just a good example of, of, of a mentoring or a, you know, a, a opportunity for the, the older students to help the younger ones here is, is really good. We always listen to our teachers and that in school, and I know that, that message doesn't always come across or isn't always received as well or as easily as it should be, but I know that peers, a lot of times, can have an easier time getting a message to sink in, and I, I think that this was an excellent opportunity for that, and great job.
I also wanted to mention, I did get a chance to look at the models, and I wondered what they were for, because I saw them last week when I was there, and I studied in quite a bit, and it was fascinating. The wood floor in the gymnasium. Somebody put an entire wood floor in the gymnasium under the design. It was interesting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else, then?
Yep.
Okay, one more. Perhaps Mr. Romeller could get us a copy of that video, and we could put it even on our website.
And I will say, too, with these guys.
If he wants his puzzle.
It was a great lesson plan.
(laugh)
I mean, it truly, truly was a great lesson plan. They had it all planned out. There was no downtime between any of the steps, and they came up with it, and I, you know, echo what you said, too. I feel like this, this project brought forward a lot of leadership from, from students as well, because they wanted to make this good, because they, part of it, they knew they were going to have to present it. The other part was, these are younger students. We tried to drive home the idea that, you know, they were, they were going to be, they're classmates at high school someday as well. So, we've got Lynn Haft. She had a, a big group, and she's the, the last survivor here to come in tonight. This is a really neat project that she did, so I'll let her explain this.
Um, so, these are QR codes, which, um, we made a website that, um, we already made a website, and each of the little codes has, like, a place to go in the middle school, and all you need to do is download a QR scanner, um, on your phone or a mobile device, which he has one. Trying to find it.
I just did it. Cool. Look at that.
How do you get that picked up on there?
You have to have this app.
And the video was made. And the video was made by Sam Q, Q L, and he did a, uh, the, what's it called? The walkthrough.
Yeah, Sam, uh, we had another student that, um, the one in the lower right, uh, sorry, left hand corner there. It's kind of a unique, neat, unique thing. He had taken the 3D walkthrough tour that presumably BLDD, BLDD created. And then he went in with Mr. Gable one night. And what they did is he created a side-by-side video with a GoPro of walking through the exact same route that, that the 3D walkthrough video takes you on. He did that all himself. And it's just, you know, he's, he's really into that and did a really nice job with it. So if you, Lynn was saying, if you download a QR reader app on your phone tonight, you can take a look at, at each one of those, uh, different scans there.
They're working. It's awesome.
So then we don't need to do a separate video?
No.
You guys already done all the work.
This is so cool.
Students taking care of all the tourists. Thank you.
And the reason why we picked them is, um, most peo-, like we just thought they were most interesting, like the treehouse. It's like, it sounds kinda cool. And then the gathers, like mostly, that's where you're mostly gonna be. And then media and balcony, they just sound kinda cool. Like it was a nice place to go. And then the cave, it's just like an individual place. And on each of the things, you can find a picture of the, um, like the, what it is. And then it has some facts about it. Sam.
Awesome.
That's something.
Very cool.
Fantastic.
Gosh, you guys are so smart.
Do, do we have any of these that are going into our building anywhere?
QR codes, yes.
You know, this is something that, on the fitness trail, on the, is it gonna be on?
It's on the fitness trail.
On the fitness trail. We are using QR codes on the fitness trail.
But, I mean, this is probably an underutilized tool, um, that if there's more opportunities like this, I mean, this could easily be implemented in the building. And it's many people will be in there through tours in the next, whatever, it'd be a, a quick way to, to do that. Maybe we missed the boat and some of our tours that we've had in the last few months that would've been a neat way to interact with, with, uh, for, for participants on the tour. To interact with some of these spaces and to see something like that. So this is a, this is impressive, very impressive.
Those are awesome.
Very nice.
I'm gonna have to download the app and learn how to use it.
Yeah.
So I can check these out.
Hi, Rick Gable, middle school principal. Um, I just need to acknowledge what, what these guys have done. Like you said, uh, they've taken care of business. And so these three guys representing what a lot of the other eighth graders have done. And it was fun to see what they did in our mock learning studio. It was enjoyable to take some of these students. I chartered some of them to Lincoln and back, uh, for some different projects. It was just, they really took care of it. But they, they, they showed where and how we want to continue to do things. They modeled that very well. But it was modeled to them by the eighth grade team. How this all started was February or March, I went to the eighth grade team. I was at their team meeting one day and I said, "How do we, or I, or what do we wanna do to put together for a presentation to our students?" And I, I wasn't playing any reverse psychology. I wasn't trying to play any tricks that old, uh, Tom Sawyer or Huck Finn type of thing. But within fifteen minutes, they said, "We got it. We got it. You can go on down the hallway and go do your other stuff. We'll get the presentations taken care of to the kids." And they did it in a very effective way using our student leaders. And as far as you guys not being in the building, that's, it's just not gonna be that way. You guys will be back in the building helping, uh, with some leadership opportunities like Mr. Rommeller was just talking about. So, thanks guys.
Very good.
Good job.
It's such an, um, appreciated, um, what we're doing. So, so appreciated by the board. Speaking for myself, I know everybody else, because what this shows is, is we're taking the opportunity, we're being presented with it. And we're building a strong opportunity for success. By involving the students, by the teachers, by Mr. Gable taking and, and your leadership. We really are setting ourselves up for awesome success. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight and sharing with us. Very much appreciated. If we have nothing else, we'll move on to number six, the Iowa assessments results with the principals from the buildings. And we'll give these guys a couple of minutes to leave and the principals can get set up.
Thank you all for coming.
I think it's because people just love this too now. I just love the nature center and I actually have the high school.
Can you paint that?
No. Yeah, I'm gonna take you.
For some.
No.
Thank you.
Is your cord long enough? The mic, probably not. We need to figure out something for sound.
You can probably move it back.
Move it back a little.
There you go.
That'll be pretty close.
Oh yeah, you're close.
Okay, as Jim mentioned, um, and Jim and Scott were there at the SIAC meeting, we presented this, uh, information there as well. So, um, it's more than just the Iowa assessment data because at the K two or preschool through second grade building, we don't use the Iowa assessment data. So we're gonna start off with sharing our PBIS, which is the Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports Data. Um, this is the triangle data that you get at the end of the year. And this is really similar to what they would like to see, that data says it should be happening in your buildings. They say that eighty percent of your students should be meeting those universal expectations. Somewhere between ten to fifteen that, um, might need a tier-two intervention. And then another five percent or so that would need a tier-three intervention. So this is Washington's data and so it, it really is spot on with what they say it should be. So we broke that down a little bit into, um, the big five. We kinda, I'm gonna just talk about four here a little bit. But looking at the big five, or big four here, um, we looked at the time. So when did our behaviors occur most frequently? And these are our top five times. Um, you know, it's one thing to note, we noted the SIAC is that between ten and ten forty-five. Those were our top three times. And that just happened to be, this year happened to be second grade recess and second grade lunch. So that's how that would correlate. Um, we did have, we'll talk a little bit more about our students, but we did have, uh, some students that made up a majority of our behavior forms that were in second grade. Um, the type of, of behavior documentation forms that we had, forty-one percent of all the minors. So minors would mean anything that was staff managed or managed by other staff other than myself. So teacher in the classroom, instructional assistants, um, librarians, Sharon and Denise, anything else besides me. Um, forty-one percent of those were physical contact or aggression. And you might think, well, if you're making physical contact, wouldn't that be an automatic, uh, you know, principal decision to be made? But when we're talking K two, sometimes it's, um, I shared this example at the SIAC, but sometimes it's you, somebody stole the ball. And when they went to go hit it out of their hand, they caught him on the arm. And they, you know, it wasn't intentional, um, physical aggression at the child. It wasn't actually a fighting or anything like that. Um, majors, we had twenty-one percent of the majors were also physical contact and aggression. So we know that those, that's a big area that we need to focus on. At K two, our students right now that are having a behavior, um, you know, they're primarily taking care of it by being aggressive in some way. Instead of, and I think you'll see a difference at, at the Lincoln, at the intermediate level. So you'll note that. Um, students, this is an interesting piece. Um, this is not a top-ten list that you wanna make. So of all of our students, top five of our students made up fifty-four percent of our behavior forms. Top ten of our students made up seventy-six percent. Um, and we used three hundred and twenty students, um, for our data. So it's an interesting piece to look at. Most of those students were receiving some kind of tier-two, not most of them, all of them were receiving a tier-two intervention, which could've been check-in, checkout. Which is where you go in the morning, you meet with an adult, you kinda go over your goals, you get a point sheet. And then you keep track of your points throughout the day, come back and you check out with that same adult. And you go over your, your data and, and that gets sent home to parents. Um, and we keep track of that. And we have monthly meetings around all of that data. Um, a lot of those students also had tier-three plans. So they might've been students that already were identified, um, as having a disability. So they had an IEP, uh, with a behavior, uh, plan. Or they might've been students that weren't yet identified or didn't need to be identified, but needed a very individual behavior plan, um, to help them be successful. Location, and this was another interesting piece for us this year. Uh, on the behavior form, you identify where that behavior occurred. And we have a list of probably ten to fifteen different places on there. And other is one of them. And, um, you know, I have one reason of maybe why did fifty-three percent of them happen in the other place. Um, this year with the nurtured heart approach, we used a lot of that term of resetting, allowing the child to reset and gain the control themselves. And, um, not just being sent right to the office. Um, and so sometimes they had kind of a walk around the building. They could go into a space that was private where they could reset and get under control. And I'm thinking that maybe some of the behavior forums documented when they were resetting versus where the behavior actually occurred. So we'll need to take a look at that as we, uh, meet this summer as our PBIS team. But other than that, sixteen percent happened in the classroom and fifteen percent were on the playground.
What's an example of a major that's in the seventy-nine percent that's not there? What would be, if it's not physical contact aggression, what would be, what would constitute a major that's not that? Does that make sense?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
So, uh, under type.
Yep.
Minor or major, twenty-one percent of all majors were physical contact or aggression.
So what were the other majors?
Yeah.
The other majors could've been like defiance or non-compliance. So maybe, um, in the classroom, you know, refusing to work, push their papers off the table, you know, or some kind of property destruction. Um, there's also lying, saying, there's a whole lot of categories, um, fighting, um, help me out vandalism, what, I mean, there's just a list of technology violations and those kinds of things. Yeah.
Some of those aren't always to another student and some of them are to the instructor.
Correct, yep. Could be staff, um, or peer. Yep. And we have a place to note that on the behavior form as well. Yep. All right. Questions or things to talk about there?
I think we took care of it.
All right, this is our FAST assessment data. The FAST is an early literacy screener, um, that we have to use now and keep track of all of our students, um, in the state of Iowa. And so this is our data for the fall, winter and spring. It, and I just put our, uh, students that are meeting target, students not meeting target, and you can just kinda follow them across. We, you can notice that we did make an improvement. Um, obviously we'd love to see those squares be green because that would mean that eighty percent of our students or more were, um, meeting proficiency that they've identified. Again, this is a screener to tell us that the students would be at risk of not meeting end-of-the-year benchmarks. And so it just tells us that, you know, we, we made some growth here. It's good. We made about five percent growth on every grade level. So if we keep really targeting those students, um, we are required to have weekly progress monitoring on those students. And required to have interventions happening as well. So, and that's all being documented and shared at data team meetings that we have, um, our problem-solving meeting that we do monthly. We share all that information there and really focusing on those students. So we keep that trend going, we're gonna see that, we're gonna see that improve. We'll see that, you know, that, that first grade group in two years, by the time they're third grade, we should see them be eighty percent, if not next year. Cause they're really close. They're at seventy-one percent. Questions about that data? I should probably explain a little of the assessment, maybe what it is. It's really about fluency. And so it's all about speed. And unfortunately, that's not the best for some students. But we obviously know the more fluent you are as a reader, the more, you know, capable you are of understanding, comprehending. But for example, the kindergarten one, um, they're assessed on fluency of letter, sound identification. So they have to say the letter sounds as quickly as possible. And if they get through all of it in a minute, it gets, the score gets recorded. Same thing, letter name, um, word segmenting, nonsense words. All of these are early literacy assessments that would indicate whether they would have the foundational skills to be a reader at that grade level. So it's all based on fluency. Um, you know.
So when Bryce has been coming home and saying, "I passed this list of whatever on color and whatever,"
Right, sight word, yeah, yep.
Then that, that's the data here that.
It's part of the data.
Level that.
Yep. Yeah, so he's doing a sight word list check is part of the data because obviously the more sight words you know, the, you know, higher level of reading correlation. So the faster you've been reading and so, yeah. I mean, it's just, it's kind of a.
I gather the other night, the SIAC committee is gonna kinda recommend to the board that we interact a policy that they try to get at least a five percent improvement every year as a, as a goal. Help themselves five percent every year.
Well, and one thing that we did as a staff in the winter, after looking at our winter data was, I mean, we obviously, you know, we looked at it, there's sixty-two percent. We want thirty-seven percent of those kids to be at proficiency. And no doubt about it, and we expect that. But we really, really targeted those kids that we called kind of our push group, our push kids. Um, we implemented Alexia Core Five, which is an intervention that they could be using two to three times a week. And really said, these, if these kids could get this extra intervention, we feel that they're the ones that are just right on that borderline, um, of getting there. And so we had some success with a handful of those students. But as we continue that intervention and continue to get, strengthen our core instruction, we'll see those improve too.
Okay.
All right.
Like Kara, I'm going to share some of the, the data from, um, Lincoln Elementary. You can see here that we have three of our triangles that we, we take a look at. Um, the first one on the left is, um, a triangle that shows all of our office referrals, both major and minor. Um, and so you can see that falls, um, just kind of right where we're talking about. Um, that yellow band is maybe a little bit wider than we would've liked to have seen it. We'd like to see the green all the way up to the eighty percent. But when you look at the next triangle in the middle, our majors, um, you can see that we're well above, um, that eighty percent in terms of our, number of our students who are having zero to one office referrals. And so we feel really good that, that the, um, severity of the types of, of behaviors that, that we're seeing need to be dealt with are, are, um, not real significant. And then again, when we look just at the minors, again, you'll see we have that wider range in the, in the yellow where we have students who are receiving two to five office referrals. And like Kara, we have a, um, talked about at Washington, we also have a system where when students get into that range where they're looking at two to five office referrals, we do use a check-in, checkout process with them. And for those students who are up in the red with six or more office referrals, we certainly have an individualized plan that we're looking at and working out with each of them. Similarly, as you look at some of the highlights of our, um, data at time, over twenty-five percent of our referrals came at ten, eleven forty-five, twelve thirty and one fifteen. These are transition times between either recess in class, lunch in class, recess and lunch. So we, we certainly know that that's going to be an area of emphasis for us going into the next school year. What are those processes and procedures that we can put in place to support students as they make those transitions? So that we can see that come down. Kara talked about physical, um, aggression being a, a high piece for them. You get to the intermittent, intermediate level and we see, uh, that forty-eight percent of all of our minors are disrespect and defiance. "You can't make me do it. I'm not gonna do it." Um, those types of, of pieces. And so that's certainly something that we're working on, um, in the classroom in terms of our cornerstones of character. What do those types of things look like? Um, and again, when we're talking minors, we're talking things that maybe are more of an entire class, um, process that we want to be looking at. Because it's, it's a wider range of students than, than some of those majors. Um, and then twenty-seven percent of all of our majors were the physical contact and aggression. And that's, again, kind of gets up into that more intense, um, behavior that we're looking at. Not quite as significant of numbers as at, at Washington when we start looking at our, uh, individual students. Our top five students made up twenty-three percent of all of our behavior referrals. The top ten made up forty percent. So still high, but not as high. Um, again, when we're talking about behaviors, it is a small percentage of students that take up a large percentage of an administrator's time. Uh, location, forty-three percent of our referrals happened within the classroom, twenty-one percent in the playground. Initially, thinking about that forty-three percent in the classroom, you might go, ooh, worried a little bit about classroom management. But when you think about it, students spend anywhere from eighty-five, you're probably, probably right around eighty to eighty-five percent of their day in the classroom. And so, uh, it makes a little bit of sense that that might be where you see more referrals coming from. The FAST data that Kara talked about. The FAST data that Kara talked about earlier is a K-three screener. So I have included our third grade numbers there. You can see fall, winter, spring coming across. We saw nice growth from fall to winter. Uh, the third grade benchmarks take a big jump from winter to spring. And so we did not, uh, continue to see as much growth as we had hoped to see from, from winter to spring. And so that will be, again, a piece that we look at with our third grade team, um, in, in the, um, fall. And to think about what do we need to do across the school year to continue to see that, the nice growth that we saw from fall to winter. You know, a ten percent increase in the number of students who are proficient. For those of you who are at the CIAC meeting, these numbers might look a little bit different from what I shared. Um, as I compared, uh, numbers, uh, with, uh, numbers that the state had, I saw some discrepancies. So we've got a glitch somewhere in our formula and I'm working with, um, some people at the AA to figure out if the glitch is on our end or on, uh, on the other end. Um, but these are the percentage of students at our third, fourth, and fifth grade levels um, in, the percent proficient in math, reading, and science. Any questions?
Full academic year or was that all?
These are all students at this time. So one of the pieces that, that were at the glitch, I started to notice is as I was trying to pull out our full academic year students. Um, full academic year students being those students who took the Iowa assessments with us last spring and spent an entire year getting instruction from teachers in the Charles City school system and then took the Iowa assessments with us again this spring. So this data may continue to change as we get those numbers pulled out.
Quick question, and so, um, and I'm, I haven't obviously done enough research on it to get all of the particulars with the, the third grade literacy in the state. If I assume it's the state or maybe it's federal, the state.
It is a state-level law.
Are these the numbers that we would be looking at if that were, you know, in place today?
So, one of the major, um, components of the early literacy law is third grade retention. So I'm, I'm assuming that's kind of what, what you're talking about. Right now, that's been put on hold as the, the state legislatures kind of work out what's that, what that is going to look at. If that were in place, we would have, uh, this summer, forty-six percent of our third grade class that would need to be taking some type of remedial summer reading program in order to move on to the fourth grade. Um, there are some pretty stringent requirements for what that summer reading program looks like. There's a number of hours that it needs to, um, be. There are some recommended best research practices that are used, um, in that piece. If students complete that summer reading program, they are then, um, advanced into the next grade.
And where, where do we fall statewide on, is this typical? I mean, are we below average?
I have not seen, um, what the state averages look like. Um, so I, I really can't answer that question. I'd be happy to come back after we get a chance to kind of look at some of the, the bigger state numbers and talk about that.
I've just read, read about, you know, the, the implications of that new law and, and all of a sudden forty-six percent, we have to provide services to forty-six percent of our students in the summer and with no additional money to do that.
Right.
How do we accomplish this? And I know they've, like you said, delayed it, but, you know, they haven't eliminated it.
No, that is true.
I don't anticipate them doing that, um, so I guess, uh.
So it's a matter of where, you know, what kind of funding is going to come with it.
If any, yeah.
Exactly.
Thanks, guys. Uh, those two giving you all the preliminary information for PBIS makes it real easy, uh, easier for me to follow up with that. Uh, I'll get back to some of the behavior data here in a few minutes, but, um, by, uh, discipline, here's your math scores. And I can tell you for all three, for, for reading, math, and science, uh, sixth grade increased in all their scores. Uh, seventh grade increased in two of the three. They did not increase in their science and math, uh, saw a decrease in all of their scores. In reading, there's also the Stanford tests. Teachers get another good representation from the Stanford tests. Sixth graders, we've continued to have, uh, a separate reading class available for them. And second chance reading for all students that need it. We had a change in our curriculum this year for seventh and eighth grade. They started teaching, uh, the English Language Arts together. They started bringing the reading into the curriculum, which is the way, we'll say, eighty-five percent of the school districts do it. Uh, that's the way we're doing it. Again, part of the interdisciplinary, uh, aspects, reading and writing go very, very much go hand in hand. Then we would identify specific students that needed to be pulled out in seventh and eighth grade. I shouldn't say pulled out. They needed to have the, uh, period made available for them to have, uh, second chance reading, another, a, a reading support class available to them in addition to their language arts and the time that they got to read in those classes. So our scores were, were very, very solid in our, uh, in our reading area, reading proficiency. But obviously, we want to get up to the eighty percent. Science scores, traditionally, we've been very solid in our science scores and the dips we had in our science scores were, um, I'll say, I'll say minor. Got to understand the fact, though, uh, totally different, uh, standards that they're teaching to, starting this year. Teachers are trying to implement the national, uh, with, excuse me, the next generation science standards in GSS. Uh, different, different aspect, different array of reorganizing, uh, their curriculum, and they're doing it on the fly. It's not like they had a few months to prepare for all of that. Uh, I mean, yes, they've known it's coming, but it was never officially adopted until the beginning of, of last year, wasn't it, guys? NGSS, beginning of last year? Beginning of, yes, this current, the year we just finished. So, those were our academic scores. Questions on that before I talk any?
Rick, do you find, I'm gonna ask the question. Do you find that being not quite as proficient in reading, that that's gonna affect their be, being precision, proficient in math and science? Is there a relationship between reading and math and science? It's gotta be some kind.
If you can read, you have the opportunity to go to do anything. That's, that's what I would say. Um, but yeah, reading and math are, are the two, we'll say, telltales of, of what their abilities are gonna be.
Okay.
Yeah, if you can read, you can obviously be successful in science. We've even thrown out ideas, we may have to take them out of core class to help support them more in, in reading. Pull them out of social studies or pull them out of science so that they can read better. They've got a chance to be successful later on down the road. I don't know if that would want to be, if you'd want to have that be a high school strategy because, again, you're talking about accumulating credits, but, um, we can still say at the middle school level, you're working on building the skills that they need to be successful later on.
Is there a big, big, uh, relationship in the, um, science? I'm sure it's a lot more fun because it's probably more hands-on.
Can be.
Than reading, sitting there just, you know.
Oh, kids, kids like science.
Makes a little more sense.
Students like science. Let's say our teachers do a nice job of engaging our students in that. Um, as far as some of our discipline issues this year, I could show you the triangles, um, just the same way that they did. I didn't put them on here. You'll have a chance to see more of the data in the year-end report. Uh, we, we had, we had some struggles this year. And, uh, one team in particular wanted to beat themselves up pretty bad. They're beating their heads against the wall and holding their heads in their hands going, what, what are we doing wrong? And sometimes you've got to step back and say, you, you can't, you can't, uh, plan for all the dynamics that are gonna get thrown at you during the course of the year. And if you throw just a couple of new kids into the mix, it can, it can throw things, uh, throw things off. We made adjustments, there continue to be some more adjustments. There were some out-of-school issues that caused us some problems for a long time in school. You know, I'll, I'll just put that out there. Other, another thing is, we do have, we have our eyes forward on where we're going. We spend a lot of the year talking about just how are we going to enter this new building? How are we gonna start that process? Uh, that takes some time to do that. Did it take time away from how we taught and how we instructed? No, I would say, we still took, here's the standards, we're teaching to these standards. But there was, there's, there's some other aspects, some other things that are going on. So, uh, there's, there's been a lot on the teacher's plate this year. And I thought, and I had that, that team that wanted to beat themselves up, I had to, uh, really kind of get after them and say, you guys, you guys need to stick with it. You've really done a heck of a job. And I had been telling people that before I heard them complaining about their, uh, their own viewpoints. But anyway, like I said, unique out-of-school issues and some PD time that was used for opening a new building. We still had several successes. A couple of our students that were on their way to setting, uh, uh, off-the-chart discipline referrals for the year. Uh, we were able to implement some, uh, plans, behavior plans with them. They're not special ed students, but we were able to implement, I guess, one was and one wasn't. But we were able to implement some plans that were extremely successful and greatly curtailed one student's, uh, need for extra attention. And the other one, he was a nonexistent, uh, office referral the last eight weeks of the year because of some efforts of our counselors and our, and our, and our, uh, uh, sixth grade team in particular that was doing some things special to help him. So we had some successes and we're gonna need to learn from those and apply those to all students as we go forward. But, uh, the move to the new school, I think Jim asked the question the other day. What's, what's that, how's that going to play into, uh, uh, discipline and student perspect, perspective and perception as we move forward? Um, I, I think it's gonna have a lot to do with how the students react and respond, how we're gonna approach them, has to change. We need to improve our, our abilities to engage and to have conversations with them and to, uh, continue to do what we're saying we're doing in our motto, which is inspire and engage.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, got a similar setup, uh, as Rick was just explaining and then just a couple of kind of culminating things over the course of looking at, um, our pre-K twelve assessment data here as we go through. Uh, math at the high school level, uh, you're looking at percent proficient from the three grade levels. Although it's not comparing the same class for three years in a row, you can see a significant rise. And the comment I put up there is, and this is very true for reading too, if you were to see when I get to reading here in a minute, you're gonna see a significant rise in proficient year to year. Um, you should see that a little bit more at the junior high and high school because students are maturing and, um, some of those different, um, classes that are being offered. And, um, particularly in math, they take different levels of math. So we start to get, uh, better feel of what those students are talented in math or what struggles that they have. Um, so there's a lot of different variables that we can contribute to these scores rising. You're gonna notice at the junior class this year, they just have high scores in general. Um, so there's a lot of different ways to look at this. Uh, but I, I do want to say, make the note that, um, it, it's nice to see as they mature that the scores do go up year to year. And I think you'll see that again next year as well. Um, in reading, and Jim, you, you mentioned reading across the curriculum. So reading in science and math, the way that these tests are set up are significant word problems in math and science. So literacy is very important to even, uh, reading the problem. Sometimes so much that the science and math get left behind because they just simply can't read the problem very well. Um, as we shift towards new, uh, testing, statewide task force that's looking at assessments, they're trying to make a better connection between the Iowa Core, which we're being told to implement in our schools and assess those same things on our statewide assessments. And there is a disconnect there. I mean, it's not a secret. That's why there's a statewide task force looking into it. So you should see that, that connection a little bit more. Uh, but what's really cool about looking at reading, and I was sitting back and talking to the ladies here, um, the reading scores at the elementary, when you look at the fifties and low sixties, you're just thinking, wow, that's a lot. Well, look how much they rise every year. As, again, as students mature and as they go through middle school and high school, you get up into the eighties and nineties by the time that we're done with them. So that significant improvement is something that we should notice as a district and we should be, we should want to see, but we should also be proud of as that continues to rise. Our percentages obviously can raise there a little bit. Uh, but it's definitely something to, um, to notice as they grow, uh, from year to year. So keep that in mind as you look at this data because there's a lot of different ways to decipher these numbers. Um, science, uh, we've mentioned a little bit about the NGSS. Um, I would say of all of our content areas, they're the ones that have, um, really, I don't want to say struggled, but really battled with, uh, adopting a new set of standards late or in the middle of a school year. Just kind of a weird time to do that. Uh, but our science team at the high school has spent more time than anybody in the state, I would venture to believe, um, setting up a consortium of regional schools to come to Charles City, uh, four times over the last two years to meet about NGSS and how to break that down, um, how to, um, structure our classes, freshman, actually seventh through twelfth grade, what kinds of standards we should be, how to break those standards down among those classrooms. Um, I really think we're in a big transitional phase in science. Um, well, now we're bringing in two new science teachers at the high school. Um, well, kind of Phoebe Pittman's moving up, but we are, we're hiring a lady who's been, um, working in Iowa for the past six years, so we have some experience there. Just a big transition. And I think that's gonna show in the science scores a little bit. But it also is gonna be one of those things, when the state comes back with the new testing services that they will change to, they have to adapt to the NGSS standards that they've adopted. There has to be a connection there. Right now, there's really not. Um, and our science teachers know that and that's a frustrating thing for them. Uh, but they're working very hard to align those things. So I'll be interested, uh, over the course of these incoming freshmen, what their scores are over the next four years in science and how those connections are being made. Uh, but they're still pretty high science scores as well, so. You know, we don't have the full academic year numbers for you tonight. Those are, we're still trying to get a handle on how to generate that data and put it into a form that actually makes sense to people when you look at it. But, that's what we have for our, our, uh, our academic scores. Since they chimed in on behavior, I'll do the same thing. We've got two, two things that take up a lot of our time right now at the high school and two things that we're gonna hammer at the beginning of the year. It's attendance, again, constantly, every year, adopting, um, trying to figure out better ways to hold kids accountable for attendance. Um, and then social media. Uh, use of social media has been a big thing for us over the course of really all school year, but more in the last three or four months, it's really hit us hard. Um, so we're gonna take some time with all students at the beginning of the year and that's gonna be a focus area. Otherwise, we have your traditional high school things going on, nothing too big.
You could put some parents on that last part.
Well, yeah, yeah. Amen. So really, it boils down to attendance and social media is what Mr. Wolf and I have battled. Um, I'd be regressed if I didn't say that eighty-two percent of our kids are still participating in, uh, school events. Um, Mr. Wolf's goal is to have that by eighty-five percent, based on the, the, the data that we got from the eighth graders that'll be freshmen next year. It's a pretty active group. So they're, they should be involved in a lot and we're hoping they kind of spike our numbers a little bit there, so. That's what I know today. Any questions?
That full academic year thing's an interesting part that, you know, it kind of hits me that if, if we didn't have them last year and this year, not knowing where they were last year, they may have made great strides within our school district, but we wouldn't know it, you know, without having that information. It may impact our scores negatively, but in reality, them as an individual made great strides.
Yeah, so, that's a great point. Jason, when we, and I, I'm not gonna get the right grade level. Uh, I think it is this, the ninth graders on this list on reading, um, of our eight lowest scores, four of them are no longer with the district since they took the test. So those transitions, I mean, not to make any excuses, but the numbers do become, they're different.
Yeah.
Um, and it's, it's always a struggle. There's, it's just the amount of data that you can sift through with these, it just gets mind-numbing, but.
Well, to only present it with a single line of data and put so much credibility on that single line is really not fair, knowing there's so many elements.
Yeah.
To all that data. I'm glad you pointed out to us too because it is, um, if you're a parent looking at this and you see that in kindergarten, first, and second, and third grade, and then you look at where your seniors will be at by the time we get done, they're ready. They're where we need them to be. We've educated them.
Yeah, it's very important.
Done well.
Do you look at, um, like previous years, like the tenth grade shows here, the tenth graders have come up a long ways from the ninth graders, but maybe the tenth graders were better when they were ninth graders too than the ninth graders are in this example?
Yeah.
I mean, are they staying pretty much, are they, if when they go from ninth to tenth, are they staying pretty stable or are they going, they changing a lot from what they were the year before?
It's usually about a two or three percent difference.
Okay.
That's some other data that we need to get put together in a more friendly way to look at it for you guys. But yeah, we do have that. Just, it takes quite a bit of time for us as principals to sit down and piece that together. But we do plan an end-of-the-year report. Um, that's one of our summer tasks every summer. We'll get that stuff put together and we'll get it kicked out to you so you can see that, definitely.
Like you pointed out earlier, the, the students make quite a difference. Like you pointed out earlier, the students make quite a difference. That's probably why it looks like here that the ninth, the tenth graders improved dramatically from ninth grade, but maybe they didn't. Maybe they, they didn't improve at all, you know? But it's hard to put all that information together, I understand.
Yeah.
Takes a lot of time.
Yeah.
Are these tests bubble fill-in sheets like?
Yeah.
Okay. What, what kind of student buy-in do you see with making their best, putting, put their best foot forward on this? I, I can, I know vividly remember Iowa test of basic skills when I was in school and.
Spell your name in the bubble sheet?
Yeah, absolutely.
You get real artistic with those bubbles.
I never did it, but if, no, but, uh, we, that, you know, there, you'd see that, you know? But what's the incentive for the, the, the kid to do good, to put their best effort forward on it? Are there incentives? You know, if, if you see a market increase from last year to this year? I know when I was in school, they did have an incentive on that.
Yeah, I think we had a free skip day from school if you improved by so many percentage wise. We, we talked about that as a staff for the first time since I've been here this year after the testing. Um, but on the, you know, the incentive side of it, on the flip side, our, our proctors, the one thing that they're really looking for is our kids taking time on each question, are they? Cause it's pretty obvious when they zip through these tests to know, they know these kids well enough. We only had to discipline one student and we made him take him over in our office and take him in a reasonable amount of time. And I think Mr. Wolf sat in two tests and I sat next to him for one. We only had to do that with one. You know, that's who we, you know, but it is a, it's a, a year to year thing. And every year, they get more tired of taking them and they get more frustrated with it.
Yeah.
Um, but it's another thing, it's, it really, we're not inside their head to know if they're trying or not.
Yeah.
Right? So, um, incentive wise, we'll have a, probably a pretty serious discussion about that as a staff this year um, because we had teachers who remembered what they got in high school.
Yeah.
If they improved, um, and classes, if they improved, um, pizza parties and different things like that. It's, um, yeah, it'll be a conversation. I can't tell you which way we'll go with it, but.
Cool.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Yep.
It'll be interesting to see the, uh, final data that they pull forward with the full academic year and, uh, the potential for being able to track students as they progress through the grade levels. That's kind of what I'm looking for as well, so.
Yeah.
And that, that'll be working out for the rest of the summer for the annual report.
You know, I'm wondering if, uh, like we've seen four different, well, three different formats in producing, you know, presenting the same information. In the annual report, will it all be a similar format? I like the, I, I would like to see something that's consistent from building to building so that, you know, it's easy to, um, easy to see the differences too between the buildings. Like I like the, the graph.
I thought that was fairly consistent from building to building.
Yeah, except we didn't see the, the pie chart or the, the.
PBIS.
Just because they didn't do it.
They don't take Iowa assessments.
Yeah, Lorraine, we don't take FAST assessments or PBIS at the high school.
Oh, okay.
So we don't have the same data.
Oh, okay.
They just had more data than we did.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah, Washington, they don't do Iowa assessments, so that was the genesis of the FAST and then PBIS.
Well, I'm thinking about the behavioral intervention, yeah, the pyramid thing.
I think Rick said though, he would include that in his year-end report, as he didn't, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I would like to see that.
Okay. Moving on then, we have agenda item seven for the math curriculum. Principals Kara Shannon and Marcia DeGore.
I think I got the lucky draw on this one, so you're gonna get to hear me again tonight. Um, I shared with you a document that was part of an exhibit that Kara and I presented a year ago um, following some significant professional development work that our teachers had done over the course of the year, um, digging into the Iowa Core mathematics standards and in particular, the standards of mathematical practice. How do we want students to be learning math? Um, and one of the outcomes of that work is page two, um, which, where we developed guiding principles for mathematics curriculum, where our teachers looked at those main headings of teaching and learning, access and equity, curriculum, tools and technology, assessment and professionalism. And really developed a, um, a guide for all of the work then that we would do as an elementary around mathematics. Um, page three was the action plan that we then put together, um, with regards to that. And that's really kind of where I'd like to focus tonight. Um, if you take a look, um, through fifteen, sixteen, we really focused around strengthening our, strengthening our teacher content knowledge, um, and supporting students as they transitioned from a teacher-directed instructional approach where the teacher says, this is the procedure, this is how you do it, let's do it together, and now you do it on your own, to a more student-centered inquiry, um, culture of learning, which is what the Iowa Core Mathematics Standards is asking us to do with those standards of mathematical practice. Um, and we spent a lot of time over this past year working with that. One of the resources that we used to make that happen was the Investigations into Numbers, Data and Space Curriculum. Um, we had investigated purchasing that material last year. However, we knew that they were due for an update very soon. We figured twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen, we couldn't pin down the publishers, but we knew that they were making significant overhauls to that. And so we made a decision, uh, not to, um, invest a lot of money at that point. But we still wanted our teachers to have the appropriate materials to really help them implement with fidelity this approach to teaching mathematics. Uh, what we've learned over the last few months is that the Investigations into Data, Number and Space New Edition is available. And so we, um, in terms of our action plan, looking at spring of twenty seventeen is when we really anticipated that we might be able and ready to purchase new material. Um, we are looking to move that date forward. Um, one of the, the overwhelming pieces of feedback that we got from teachers is that the, the materials that we're using are great, but there are some alignment issues that we're concerned about, that we know are being addressed in the new, um, edition. And, and they were very, um, Pearson, the company that publishes it, was very upfront. These are the changes that, that we're making. And teacher said, yep, that's exactly what I noticed when I was teaching this, that, that I either needed to strengthen or it was like, why is this here? So, um, feeling very good about those types of pieces. And so as we continue to move forward and look at supporting our students and, and lifting them up, we want to have the right resources in our hands to do that. And so on the very back page, you'll see the proposal that is put together from, uh, Pearson in regards to this material. Um, it is a significant investment. Uh, we're looking at a total of around fifty-five thousand dollars for K five mathematics materials. Um, if you look at the far right-hand corner, you'll see that there are some different categories of where we are suggesting that the funding for this come from. Um, we receive as a district Iowa Core Teacher Quality Money. This is money that is designed specifically for strengthening teachers' professional development around the Iowa Core. And so those pieces that are designated as being paid for with Iowa Core money are, are pieces that, that we think fall right into that. Um, we, one of the pieces that our teachers very much appreciate about the Investigations into Numbers, Data and Space is that the teacher professional development is job embedded. The work that we do as we learn and make ourselves better teachers is part of the curriculum and part of the teaching that we do every day. And that paragraph right above the table is, is right out of their implementation guide and, and talks specifically to that piece. Um, the manipulatives kit, uh, is, we are suggesting be paid for through SINA money. This is one-time money that the elementaries receive, um, for our designation as schools in need of assistance because our percentage of students who are not proficient is where it's at. Um, we receive this extra money and it's a, a use it or lose it type of, of piece. And so we saw this, um, as part of our SINA plan. Uh, we know that, uh, the Iowa Core calls for students to have multiple tools for, um, solving mathematical problems so that they can take it from the concrete to the abstract. And that's exactly what those manipulatives will do. And then the, the last piece, we know that some of this is just instructional support levy money. This is the money that we need to be spending to have kids, um, reach where we need them to reach. And so this is the proposal that's being put forward, um, to the board. I'm looking for your approval for the adoption of this curriculum. Questions that I might be able to answer for you?
Might I like comment, uh, of course I like, obviously you see the big number on the bottom and you step back and say, whoa, where's this money come from? Well, that's answered.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's, I appreciate that being laid out in that manner. And to comment on the ISL recently passed levy, um, put to work. You know, what's right here is being put to work in, in a, in a good manner.
I would, I would also, um, tell you that this number really, um, if you think about it, spread over six years. Um, that's typically what we would look at to get for quality, um, with a curriculum adoption. That, that kind of gets you through a cycle. Um, and so that is the, the piece that we worked with Pearson to kind of think of this as a six-year plan.
What do they do with the old work? The old material?
There's a number of different things we can do. Uh, the number of kids who like to take home old textbooks surprises you. Um, there are also different, um, ways that we can appropriately dispose of those um, in terms of, um, those who are less fortunate might need some textbooks. I know Mrs. Shannon is working with a group, um, that we may be able to donate those textbooks to, so.
Motion to approve the purchase of the twenty seventeen Investigations into Numbers, Data and Space Math Curriculum for fifty-five thousand, one hundred and five dollars and fifty-three cents from Pearson.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve agenda item seven as presented. Any other comments or questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote, please.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Thank you. Agenda item eight is the Middle School Edition Change Orders. And don't forget, we have the additional one added this evening. Buildings and grounds met this morning and reviewed these. Are there any comments to be made from that committee? Or Dr. Cox?
It's kind of all spelled out here on this extra sheet.
Couple of, couple of things, you know, the additional fire department signage was several thousand dollars for simply some numbers put on the outside of the building. So I think we're gonna seek an alternative to that, a cheaper alternative. So that's one reason that one's not put in. The other one was some equipment, food service equipment that, um, didn't probably fit into this space to be approved. Um, contractors allowance, like it says, um, that money that's been left in each of those contracts. The added infrastructure gym equipment through donation, that's some stuff that at some point here down the road, uh, we will, there, there's, uh, gonna be some donations that will include some equipment for the gym that needed some infrastructure to accommodate those items that will be donated. And this, uh, you know, it needed to be a change order to make those infrastructure changes, but that at some point will be recaptured through, uh, the donation. Anything else? The, the change in the Commons Wash Basin, maybe you can fill in on that.
Um, there was, uh, an error in what was ordered. Um, and it came down to an error on the, um, on.
Architect.
Architects possibly, um, and they're taking responsibility for that. So they'll adjust, make allowances, deal the deal with that.
Yeah. So although we're approving that cost tonight, that will be essentially given back to us in an adjustment of their fees. Um, is what, uh, was explained this morning, so.
There was some wash basin's wrong size that were, that were put on the.
Spec differently.
On the spec sheet that were, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And they've stepped up to take their responsibility on that.
Well, that's good, cause I read through that and I thought, huh.
Yeah. Yeah, we shouldn't be responsible for that.
Yeah.
That was made clear very well by Dr. Cox.
Pretty much comes down to what that company is charging us for restocking fee, I believe. So that's, yeah.
Are you ready for a motion?
Motion to approve Middle School Change Order sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-eight, sixty-nine and seventy, totaling twenty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars and nineteen cents.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Middle School Change Orders, number sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-eight, sixty-nine and seventy, totaling twenty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-two dollars and nineteen cents. Any other discussions by the board? Any comments or questions from the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote, please.
Wintering?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes. Motion carried five to zero. Agenda item nine is the Confidential Secretaries Handbook. Does the negotiations committee or Dr. Cox want to, uh, talk about these upcoming agenda items at all?
The percentages are similar to the teaching staff and support staff percentages. There's some wording changes on a few of these when it comes to the benefit handbooks. And it's all pretty much laid out there for you in your agenda.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve a three point four three package increase for confidential secretaries and a seven point eight eight percent increase for Sam Gaston as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the three point four three percent package increase for confidential secretaries and a seven point eight eight percent increase for Sam Gaston as presented. Any other comments or questions? Roll call vote, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes. Motion carried five to zero. Agenda item ten, the Program Room Coordinator Positions. You also have, have that, uh, laid out for you in the packet. Anybody wanna make any comments on these? If not.
Motion to approve the salary and hourly rate increases for the Program Room Coordinator Positions as recommended.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the salary and hourly rate increases for the Program Room Coordinator Positions as recommended. Any further questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote, please.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes. Motion carried five to zero. Agenda item eleven, the Director Contracts and Handbooks.
Motion to approve a three point four one percent package increase in handbook changes for directors as recommended.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the, or a three point four one percent package increase and the handbook changes for directors as recommended. Any questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes. Motion carried five to zero. Agenda item twelve, Administrator Contracts and Handbooks. Again, we're looking at a three point four one percent package increase for building principals and the associate high school principal.
I move to approve the four point, three point four one percent package increase for building principals and the associate high school principal as presented.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the, or a three point four one percent package increase for the building principals and the associate high school principal. Any questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call. have roll call vote, please.
Wintering?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes. Motion carried five to zero. Agenda item thirteen, the financial report for May of two thousand sixteen. Does Mrs. O'Brien have anything she'd like to highlight for us?
The only thing I guess I'll highlight is, you know, we're coming to the close of our fiscal year. There's going to be a lot of accruals and stuff made. We will be paying a second set of June bills to get as many paid, you know, by the end of the fiscal year to avoid having to accrue them. When we bring the June financial statements, it'll include a lot of, a lot of the accruals, not all of them. That will be completed by September fifteenth. So during the months of July and August, you're going to get just the bank reconciliation statements. You're not going to get progress on expenses or, or revenue as compared to budget, because we haven't set the line item budget yet for the next year.
Any questions? Ready for a motion?
Make a motion to accept the May twenty sixteen financial report as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the May two thousand sixteen financial reports as presented. Any further questions from the board? Any comments or questions from the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes. Motion carried five to zero. Agenda item fourteen is the superintendent's evaluation process. You all received tonight a copy when you came in of the Iowa Superintendent Evaluation. We will have a closed session, I'm guessing, in two weeks.
I would guess the same.
And originally, that was talked about having before the regular meeting at six-thirty. We're still thinking that's going to happen.
At five-thirty either.
At five-thirty for evaluation.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Okay. So, be appreciated if you could get your evaluations filled out and returned to me by Wednesday, June twenty-second, so that I have an opportunity to have a couple of days to compile them. And I will be in my office on that day in case anyone wants to just bring them to me. Since that's not an action item, we'll continue unless Dr. Cox has anything he'd like to add.
I think you hit all the points there.
Agenda item fifteen, the consent agenda.
I'll do it. Dan, I don't know.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, listed below.
Second.
Second there.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as listed. Roll call vote, please.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Wintering?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes. Motion carried five to zero. Agenda item sixteen, correspondence and miscellaneous. We have the enrollment report at the end of our packets. Any comments or questions about that?
It'll be interesting to see how it carries over the fall.
Yeah.
Minus twenty-nine, right?
Yeah, minus twenty-nine.
For the public, for the beginning of the school year, or from August, October first to today, to the last day of the school year, down twenty-nine students.
You know, I'll talk to you after the meeting.
Agenda item seventeen, important upcoming dates.
I listed all the school board meeting dates and locations from now through August twenty-second. A reminder of the ISFIS conference that Jason and Rob are attending, and classes will begin August twenty-ninth, which sounds like a long ways away, but it really isn't.
Not really.
It'll be here fast.
Yeah.
We didn't use to. That was a change in policy.
Okay.
Might not make the twenty-seventh.
It is current policy. We have two meetings in July.
No, but we meet the twenty-seventh, the meeting.
Send a reminder out on this on Wednesday morning?
Yes, I'll send you all a reminder for your evaluations on Wednesday, June twenty-second. Having no other business to come before the board, we will adjourn.